Houston, Florida.
You're going to pull your uniform, buddy.
Board of Fire. The order is to order. This meeting is open to the public. We're at 8:48 Airport Road, Houston, Florida, on July 10th, 2018, 5:30 PM. First thing on the agenda is employee recognition. Chief Sasser, please.
Yes, sir. A couple of meetings ago, we started the process of a program recognizing our employees for their own duty, those that have accomplished 20 years. We started with Battalion Chief Anderson because he had just obtained his 20 years. And in doing so, we realized that there were several employees that had already obtained their 20 years that we had not recognized, and we didn't want to go without recognizing them and providing them with the same plaque because they do work here right now. They haven't retired yet. So those that have retired will not get plaques, so Chief Dixon's not going to get a 20-year plaque and any of the rest that retired. But those that are working here that have served 20, we did not want to not do our due diligence and actually recognize them and let the board know that these employees have worked with us for a long time, that dedicated the majority of their life to this district, our citizens and visitors to our district. So with that said, if I could, I'd like to recognize Battalion Chief James A.
Is it A?
Allen.
Thank you. Alan, thank you. I figured somebody would. James Allen Taylor. As everyone knows, he is Jimmy. And for everybody who knows, Jimmy's been with us 27 and a half years. So that's a very long time, probably longer than any other employee that he has worked for us. So, thank you, sir. Check my hand, hold the plaque.
Good. Congratulations.
He's 30 feet tall, question.
I did my math. Actually, I had to sketch him.
Yeah, he's one of those old Chinese.
Advocate is the word for that.
Yeah. Thank you.
How was those two?
The next employee that we need to recognize is Mark H. Hudson. I don't know what H.
Albert. Why would you say that?
Hey, Barrett. Hey, Barrett. In Cajun, right? Come on up, Mark. And Mark's been with us 22 and a half years, a little less than Jimmy, but he's been there for a long time, and we want to recognize him for his dedicated service. Thank you, buddy.
Thank you.
Right here. Oh, right there. Why are you taking it with a pink phone?
Thanks, Mark.
I remember the winner.
There's a long gum.
That was a secret handshake you got.
Great job. We appreciate that. Appreciate your long, hard efforts and being away from your spouses. The district really appreciates it.
About my main part.
Oh, I do want to make note, though, that Mr. Wilson is absent from the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Yes, excuse me.
Yes, sir. He called me just the other day.
All right. Floor is open for public comments. If anybody would like to make any comments. Don't quit. All right. Seeing none, the floor is closed to public comments. Review of the minutes, regular meeting, June 12th, 2018.
I'm making a motion for the minutes, July 12th, 2018.
Second. I get a motion to approve the regular meeting in June 12th, 2018, and second. Any discussion? Any changes? See enough, off the vote. You know. Review of the financial report, June 30th, 2018.
Financial statements before you are for a nine-month period when we have the last quarter of our fiscal year ago. The report looks good. Our cash position is still strong. Do not anticipate needing to draw from the day-to-day fund until the end of the fiscal year, if not sooner, if the board decides to resume payments into the pension trust. The statements before you, just as last month, are clean, normal payroll for the month, low repair and maintenance, only exception is two capital expenditures for the purchase of scheduled bumper gear lockers and the receipt of the new battalion vehicle. So if there's any specific questions, I can address those.
And when is that going to be in service, Chief?
It is at Williams Communication Crestview right now, having, being outfitted with the command module in the back, as well as all electronics that go in it. We stressed in the importance of us receiving that vehicle as quickly as possible. However, we understand that they have quite a few shares vehicles, between 30 and 40 of them, that they are working on right now, but they said they would dedicate somebody to the vehicle. Or, we called them today. They are waiting on the brackets for the rumbler. Brackets didn't come with it, didn't ship, whatever the issue is, but waiting for those who show up to install that. They left us an impression that once that's there, they have the rumbler installed, then we'll be able to take this battalion to them so they can exchange, they can move the radios over, because we're not purchasing their radios. Move radios over, that should take them a couple of days, we should have. So I don't know how long it's going to take for them to receive the brackets, but I would anticipate before our next meeting that the new battalion will be sitting in the bay and that Al Marant will have the old battalion.
And I guess yours will be used during the interim?
Yes, sir. That's right.
Any other questions? I'm going to take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the financials?
I get a motion to approve financials for June 30th, 2018, and second. Any further discussion? See enough, off the vote. All right. All business. Noriega Point lifeguard.
Yes, sir. I started meeting off with something really good and pleasant, but I didn't have the opportunity to thank the board for their condolences for the loss of my mother-in-law. I do very much appreciate that. And it's kind of led into that because this wasn't something that I was able to discuss at our last meeting, but I did get the board direction and followed through with the direction of the board in between last meeting and this. Had a meeting with the city manager, sat down with her, talked to her about Noriega Point, its completion, the fact that people are recreating there now, much less waiting for the completion of Noriega Point, and we just expect there to be more people. So she had already had discussions with Ms. Adams, who's the director of the TDD, in reference to them providing the funding for the lifeguard. We went before Joe, I, and the city manager went before the TDD to request those funds to place lifeguard there this year, as well as funds for next year's budget to have two guards there. Our request was to fill this rest of the season with one guard and the equipment associated, and then next year, to place the second guard there. That was our initial request. Commissioner Wines made the motion to provide us with two lifeguards and let the professionals make the decision on where those guards need to go and provide a cruise island with additional lifeguard. So that motion passed. So we, right after that meeting, that Friday, we placed the guard at Noriega Point. That guard's been there and will finish out the season too later day at Noriega Point, and he will indeed will be paying those costs. The second guard that we're receiving this year is going to place on Holiday Isle. We evaluated, we knew there was a need, and we'll place that guard there now. Going into next season, we'll make an evaluation as to whether that guard stays on Holiday Isle or moves over to Noriega Point, depending upon what the TDC does, if they provide us with the funding so that we can continue to maintain that guard on Holiday Isle and have the two at Noriega Point. That's how we'll proceed. If not, we will, Joe and I both anticipate we'll need two guards at Noriega Point when it is fully functional and operating. As this commission knows, the mere size of that area where people can recreate and swim in the water, just its size is going to require two guards, much less the number of people that will be, that we anticipate will be there before they even start this reconstruction of Noriega Point. All of us know how many people we're over there actually recreating, and we anticipate it's going to be. So in short, we've got the money from TDZ, TDD to provide that funding for this year.
What about the equipment?
And the money for the.
The towers we want?
The two-man tower, the two-lifeguard tower.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And that will be purchased next year, not this year, because we only have one guard there, so we're putting one of our chairs there, the spirit chair. No, we're putting an ATV there and putting the spirit chair on Holiday Isle. We're putting an ATV there because of the mere distance they have to cover back and forth. So right now, there's a ATV, but we will be purchasing the two-lifeguard chair for the beginning of next season.
Good. Okay, good.
Correct?
Yes, sir. That's perfect.
Good. Good. That's great. Good job. That's all right. That was our goal.
The TDD has had to change out of a few members, and they seem to be much more receptive to our recommendation of needing additional guards, and especially at Noriega Point.
I'm at the city meeting, they're talking about putting buoys up across the entrance and some signage, too. So that'll help.
That'd be great.
Good job.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Any other special? All right. Moving to chief's report, beach safety updates. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a lot, other than that on July 3rd was one of the busiest days we've ever had in Destin. We rescued and documented 43 people and transported three. When I put these numbers, submitted them to Catherine, I went back and looked at it. One was a medical, obviously we have those all the time over the beach, but one was a near drowning, to my understanding that was in the, it was in the guard area, and that person did survive. One of the transports was in the state park, and that person did not make it. So just looking at the statistics, I mean, there's the big jump. We're already at one point, close to 1.2 million people, probably that number, because this was submitted on the 4th, and we are on pace to rescue the most people we ever had, who were up to 267 people, almost 300. I think it's a little bit a combination of the weather, but also there are just that many people recreating in Destin. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Now, are you keeping stairs on the boat, too? On the lifeguard on the boat?
We do. We do. I haven't, we haven't put those in there yet, but we will the next meeting.
Yeah, let's start looking at that, what's going on at Crab Island.
And now that we have a guard at Noriega Point, we're going to document. As you know, we document all of our zones. Every lifeguard is documented, so we're going to start documenting Noriega Point as well, which will be beneficial into next year when we press them for that second guard. But I'll make sure they're in the Crab Island as we have done in the past, or in the report for next week.
June grass start showing up?
A little bit. We haven't seen any of the sea lice, jellyfish, or the large amounts of June grass that other people reporting on their beach. You go offshore a little bit, some of that stuff is there, but not on the beach, so.
Trying to report?
Yes, sir. You'll see that we got in there in 23 hours of training this past month, just like they did the month before, which is outstanding, is more than the 20 that's required, speaking of required training. ISO was in on Monday to do a review of our department. We should have the results of their review in the next three, four months. It kind of takes that long for them to put all the information together, but you know, our current classification is class three. We are hopeful to be able to maintain that. And if we anticipate, we will. But they were in to review, which training is a large part of, one of the areas that they evaluate is training personnel, those are the two larger items that contribute to our three. It's about 23 hours, and we'll probably be making some adjustments to our training in the future, and we'll probably see more hours than this each month.
Any questions? Inspection report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You had the report in front of you there. Just two things to note. I received two packages today, Legacy Lifestyles. It's a 112,000 square foot assisted living. It's going to be one south of the elementary school, and that big parcel there for the church. And then the other package I received was the Vintage Destin, which is the 281 units behind Wind Dixie there. So them two projects are construction plans in the room right now, getting ready to go forward. So that's two major projects about to come forward.
Any idea how that impacts?
I'll have that for you at the next meeting. I just received them today, so.
You have two pretty good sizes. Yeah? Good. Thank you, Ben.
Thanks, man.
Spots change report?
Yes, sir. As with each month, there's a new orange page is here. You'll see that we weren't very busy in June, and I think the fact that we were so busy and that our actual 90 percentile, crack hour response times went down, you see from May was it 90, 87 in June. And remember, this is, we evaluate ourselves at a high, we hold ourselves to a higher standard than typical EMS organizations around the country. They use a 9 as a standard, we use an 8. I think if we went back to the 9, you would see these numbers at 90% or greater, but because we're grading ourselves on a more difficult standard to obtain, you'll see the numbers fluctuating and be in the 80s. But anyway, it went down. We were pretty busy this month, in June. You'll also see that in the next page, page 20, the percentage breakdown is the norm as it is. Most every month, 67% call volume was out of station 9, and 33% was out of station 10. You'll see on page 21, where we have it, district broke down into zones. As we've been saying about Zone 1, which is where we want to put the West End Station, you'll see in June, there were 72 calls running in that zone alone. When you compare that, that's very similar to the 76 that was run in the zone of Station 9 since then. So I think it kind of shows that that end of town is busy and really does require having a unit in that area. With that said, the changes that we had made with the alphas and the skilled nursing facilities are the next couple of pages. You'll see on page 22, the call volume for May, which that report was not there, in May, we ran 324 calls. We had a potential run of 370. EMS did not request our assistance on 46%, or 46 calls, which have placed a 14% differential. So the changes we made reduced our responses by 14%, which means those are 46 calls that we were not vetted, not requested our assistance. Of those 46 calls, you'll see 34 of those were to skilled, 34 of them were to, were alpha calls, and 12 of them were at skilled nursing facilities. And you'll see on the next page, 202 of those calls were medicals, 122 were fire rescue calls, and we were called to, for assistance on 11 alpha calls and 12 skilled, 12 calls to skilled nursing facilities. So they did request our assistance for those calls that we told them we were going, but they didn't need our assistance, but no need to call 22 hours. Then we, next page will show the June call volume. We see an increase, 399 calls run in June. We've had a potential run of 439, that's that difference of 40 calls, and roughly 10% difference. And you'll also see on that same page, page 24, where those 40 calls that did not run on, 33 of those were alphas, and 7 of those were at skilled nursing facilities. Of the 399 calls that we ran, 227 were medical, 172 of those were fire rescue calls, or breakdown at 57 and 40%. And then you'll see we did respond on 14 calls, alphas and two skilled nursing facilities, 9 to alphas and 5 to the skilled nursing facilities. And then you'll see on the next page, page 26, which is the call breakdown. You'll notice in June, we almost ran 50 MBAs. And I noticed that several of those were within traffic, but the call breakdown is very similar. Where we are high is in the MBA area, which kind of makes sense. We have a lot of people in town, there's a lot of traffic, and we've got road construction going.
And unconscious victims?
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Significant increase, yes. So I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Overtime report?
Yes, sir. You'll see that we've had guys in school now for about three months. They've been doing really well, the guys that are in school, hearing big reports back. The fact that we've been in, they've been in school for three months, and it's a condensed class, they're having to put a lot of hours in, clinical hours in. We've been very good at managing their time away and able to kind of keep our overtime down, as you probably see in the previous months. This month, we had a few hours, but not a lot, relatively speaking to the number of hours that they're gone. But you'll also notice that the higher hours earned for this pay period were earned by those that are new employees. So you kind of notice that's there. So the 22 hours that were earned was earned by one of our newest employees, and it kind of goes, you'll see that with the three higher hour, the three employees that received a number of hours overtime came from those employees that were fairly new. So that does keep those all costs down. But overall, not bad really for the month, with as much as we've got going on in June.
Good job. Any questions? Moving to new business, budget workshop, second presentation.
Yes, sir. I think you'll find that we're not making any changes between the last budget workshop and presentation and this presentation. However, Ms. Catherine, I think is going to provide you with some additional information, some changes that might be forthcoming, and discuss the presentation.
Adjustments that we'll be looking to make prior to our next presentation, which is the August commissioners' meeting, are going to cover items such as an archive system. This is an email archive system. We need to improve that. We're having problems with the system that we currently have, and we must make a change. Station 9, we have in the budget to remodel the kitchen. We also need to put in there to remodel the front office. And what I mean by that is to add security features to the front, to where it's not just a walk into the building and go anywhere you want type of situation, have access to everything. So we need to make some security changes to the front office. There's a possibility that we're going to have to roll out the Class A uniforms due to our vendor. Our vendor that we use is having problems getting out and sizing our guys. He may not be able to be here until August, and that's really cutting the window short to get the uniforms in by the end of this fiscal year. Beach safety, Chief Sasser already talked about beach safety and additional funding that the TDD is going to provide us, so that will be an adjustment. We're halfway through the junior lifeguard program at this point, so Division Chief Daxton and I will be needing to try to figure out the plan for next year. We are only at 50% enrollment of what we are high had been a few years ago. So we need to really evaluate the program, see what changes need to be made to, you know, to get that a little higher. Those are the major things. I mean, we've got to do a little bit of increase for training. Maybe at Station 10, there's some repair maintenance items we were hoping to get into this year, large ones, and that may not happen until the next fiscal year. So we will be proposing those all at the upcoming meeting. I didn't just want to throw numbers in, especially for construction-related and for items. I'd like to be more precise in what we present. So there have been the changes. I don't know whether any of the commissioners have, whether there was anything that you found in the budget between our last meeting and now that you are concerned about. Otherwise, we'll just make the changes necessary, and we will have to take from some things to add some things, because for the most part, it's about the budget that we presented. So we're going to have to shuffle some items around to make these new ones fit in.
Any questions? Good. Contract extension, Carwigs and Ingram?
Yes, sir. I'll let Ms. Catherine pick up on this, but what we're really looking to do is set an agreement, Carwigs and Ingram, an additional three-year audit agreement.
No.
I'll let Ms. Catherine pick up.
So 30 years ago, we went out for an RFP, and we, Carwigs and Ingram was selected for another 30 years. We are at that point again, and what we found is that you can either go out for another RFP, or we can ask for a renewal of our contract. And Bruce Nunley at Carwigs and Ingram is very willing to enter into a one-year contract. And I do know that he is planning on retiring at the end of this year, and which would probably be the reason for just a one-year contract, but they're willing to keep the price the same as it's been the last 3 years. And go ahead and begin work on this audit in November. It typically begins in November. We don't have anything to sign at this point. If it's what you would like to proceed with, if you do, I'll reach out to Chad Branson, and he'll put together an engagement letter for us. We run this by a legal counsel, DC Malhous, and we feel, and this is pursuant to state statute that allows us to renew the contract.
So basically, we're just extending it?
Correct.
Because we get the same.
I'll make a motion, we extended for another year due to, I think it's very important, if Bruce is getting ready to retire, as long as we've had him, I hate to see us jump ship the last year that the man is able to do what he has done for us for so many years. So with that said, I'll make a motion to extend it another year.
All right. We got a motion, a second, to extend the contract for Carwigs and Ingram. Any discussion? All right. All right. The resolution, 18-04, to declare 2006 Sherbal Lake, Colorado obsolete. And that's the beach safety, Judge Trump.
Yes, sir. We had held on to it with the intent of using it for as long as we could, meaning that Joe and I had discussed him having an assistant, a full-time assistant. We did not, we decided to go a different way, use two or three employees that he had out there to fill that role, as compared to bringing someone along with benefits and that kind of thing. So that's been working well for us, but with that said, having those people to fill that assistant role, they need that, they need a vehicle to be able to perform functions of that job. So we held on to this vehicle for as long as we could and tried to make it through this year. What we found, can't give you the timeframe, but is that that vehicle has been used quite a bit, has been on the beach, and the frame is rusty, so we need to, we need to get rid of it. So we're asking the board to make it obsolete, so.
So move.
If it's, if it's. The frame's that rusty, we don't need it to leave the beach and get on the road.
Are we going to knock it off?
Is it going to jump? No, he's going to try to get what he can out of it.
Right. And that's what the resolution's for. Ms. Catherine and I just discussed that we had put $1,000. I think that might be a bit generous of us to ask that much. We might, might ask the board to approve this resolution with that modification of maybe $500.
So move.
Does that AC work?
No.
No?
Here's why.
Four-wheel drive.
Four-wheel drive is the only thing that works on it, but if you push your finger on the frame, pieces come off. If you leave blow sand underneath, rust links come off.
And we're going to disclose a lot of that.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't think we need to be driving on the road if the frame is that bad.
I was worried about getting, we're going to.
These guys are going to be getting a phone call, and I don't want that, look.
No, I don't want our guys driving at all, but.
I treat this vehicle the same as we did when we had.
Gone.
I don't know if I want anybody driving it on the road.
Gone.
Get rid of it if it's that bad.
We had a similar issue with Beach 10 in the past, and we had a gentleman that restores vehicles, and he bought that vehicle and redid it.
Is it going to jump?
No, he's going to try to get what he can out of it.
Right, and that's what the resolution is for. Ms. Catherine and I just discussed that we had put $1,000. I think that might be a bit generous of us to ask that much. We might, might ask the board to approve this resolution with that modification of maybe $500.
So move.
Let's look at the.
Does this see work?
No.
No?
Here's why.
Four-wheel drive.
Four-wheel drive is the only thing that works on it, but if you push your finger on the frame, pieces come off. You blow sand underneath, rust links come off.
And we're going to disclose a lot of that.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, yeah. I don't think we need to be driving on the road if the frame is that bad.
I, I was worried about it, we're going to, we're going to bring it out there.
These guys are going to be getting a phone call, and I don't, I don't want that, look.
No, I don't want our guys driving it off, but.
I treat this vehicle as soon as we did when we had.
Gone. I don't know if I want anybody driving it on the road.
Get rid of it.
If it's that bad.
We, we had a similar issue with Beach Tent in the past, and we had a gentleman that restores vehicles, and he bought that vehicle and redid the frame, and he sold it. So there are people out there that will buy it, but I think $1,000, in my humble opinion.
Hopefully, they need parts, and it'll be a parts truck.
I hope so.
All right, so you got a motion?
Yes, sir.
In a second?
Okay. Is it for $500 bucks or $1,000?
$500. For best. We can go ahead and put it up.
Right.
All right, so move. All right, further discussion, West End District Station.
Yes, sir. Attended, as Chairman Moore did as well, and Commissioner Wagner, the last city council meeting. The city council pulled the plans back to the city council and asked that, or directed that myself and Commissioner Buckingham work with Harbor CRA to create a plot plan or drawings for the park for the council to approve. So Commissioner Buck, Commissioner Buckingham and I will be working with the Harbor CRA. They have a meeting tomorrow. We'll go be there to answer any questions they have, but we'll be working with them to come up with a plot plan for the property itself and location of the station, and then impact all the things that we talked about. I think Commissioner Buck and I, I will be able to answer any questions they have or any concerns they have, and be able to wrest those concerns and anticipate we'll be able to move forward with that. As far as interior drawing, the layouts and all that, I don't know that that's necessarily anything that would be of concern to them. I think it's more of, how's it going to impact the park and the footprint for a plot plan? So, so anyway, it's positive news. We're finally able to kind of get some traction now, where I think we can start moving forward on the station where we've kind of been unusual for a little while. So just, just an update, and hopefully we'll have better news in the next year.
Yeah, we'll know more tomorrow night.
Good luck.
Good. Thanks, guys.
Good job.
All right, and I'd like to congratulate Mike on going unopposed and coming back and serving on the board again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And Jack Wilson as well. He's not here to congratulate, but congratulations, Jack, if you're watching. And I understand that you have opposition?
Yes, sir.
All right, so I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Hope you return. So, anybody, anything else? All right, we got the regular meeting scheduled for next month, August 14th, 2018, at 5:30 PM here at Station 9.
I'd like to thank the gentlemen one more time for your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stick around for a while.
God, you're older, you're.
This meeting's adjourned.